Good evening and welcome to the July 7th meeting of the Select Board. Sorry, it's July 8th today. Please join us in standing if you can for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Nick, do you want to grab that sign and sheet? So we're going to start with public comment and as Nick retrieves or Mr. Milano retrieves our sign and sheet, just want to say a couple of words. Over the weekend, we had a couple of serious incidents in Milton. A traffic crash on Randolph Ave. And we also had a shooting that happened down at the Milton Landing. We are going to, on both of those matters, because they happened after we posted our agenda, we're not going to be able to talk about them in detail tonight. But we will hear from some citizens and want to share that we've asked on the crash side for meetings with the Department of Transportation. And on the shooting side, the landing committee is going to be meeting next week at 8:30 a.m. We're in conversations with Milton Police Department, Dexter Southfield and other, not Dexter was involved in the shooting, but they have a presence at the landing. So that work is underway. I just wanted to say that before we got started with with citizens comment. So our first name on our list is Mr. Pariser, Pariser from 88 Wharf.
Thank you and good evening. My name is Ken Pariser and I live at 88 Wharf Street. And thank you for the opportunity to share my concerns about the events of the early morning on July 6th. My family has been part of the Milton community since 1985. Our children and grandchildren attended Milton Public Schools and have enjoyed the town's parks and amenities for decades. Two years ago, we downsized, my wife and I, and moved to Milton Landing to stay close to our family, all of whom still live in Milton. Our condominium overlooks the Noponsit River basin and wharf. In the early evening, we often hear the cheerful sounds and voices of teenagers enjoying the riverside at sunset. But as the night deepens, the voices change. Cars gather at the rear of the parking lot and behind the tent. The tone of the voices shifts from lighthearted to harsh, often punctuated by arguments and raised voices. When I'm awakened by the commotion, I frequently see vehicles coming and going. While I can't say for certain what's taking place, it's clear it's not boating or fishing. The pace of this activity has noticeably increased and several neighbors have contacted the Milton Police regarding the disturbances and their response has been commendable. The area is cleared, but only temporarily, with groups returning that night or the following day. Until recently, the disruptions have been worrying but not dangerous. Sadly, none of us are surprised that the situation has escalated into something far more serious and nearly deadly. I'm not here to tell the Milton Police how to curtail this activity. But I am here to insist that a plan of action be created and implemented quickly before an innocent bystander is wounded or killed. I don't have the expertise to determine whether a gate preventing cars from entering the wharf after dusk, a surveillance camera monitored by the police, or both are the answer. I'm only here to urge the Select Board, the town and the police to act quickly to make the wharf area safe again for families to enjoy and to prevent a tragedy. And I thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. And I should have mentioned this at the top of Citizen Speak, but everyone gets three minutes. We have a total of 21 minutes. There are two people in person that have signed up and we do have one attendee. So I'm going to do the other in person and then we will do our online attendee. And we have Mrs. Smith from Canton Ave. Oh, it's Mr. Smith, sorry. Hail, nice to see you there.
I get help lots from my wife, so. Good evening. My name is Hale Smith. I've lived at 1632 Canton Avenue for 46 years, which is a very long time. I'm here to support the Milton Climate Action Plan Draft. The 42-page draft document represents a tremendous amount of effort by the Climate Action Planning Committee, all committed volunteers. It builds upon and aligns with the Massachusetts legislation for addressing climate change and resiliency. Milton's municipal facilities represent a small portion of the town's total carbon footprint. However, the town should and must lead in adopting the Climate Action Plan recommendations. Section 3.2.1 of the plan, Goals and Metrics, targets reduction in fossil fuel consumption from municipal buildings of 50%, 75%, and 100% by 2030, 2040, and 2050 respectively. Did you know that Eversource has installed a utility-scale geothermal system in Framingham? Salem is investigating a geothermal network providing heating and cooling for 21 downtown buildings. And Wellesley Village Church has converted its HVAC system to geothermal. Milton could jumpstart its own efforts in partnering with, by partnering with private institutions to install a district geothermal network. Federal rebates of up to 30% for geothermal networks are still available through 2034, unlike solar, wind turbines, and EVs. Time for federal support is short. I encourage the Select Board to thoughtfully engage with the draft Milton Climate Action Plan and its recommendations. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. We have one virtual attendee with their hand up. If you could promote them, Mr. Milano. Can you hear us online? Is it, is it Boa? Who's there? Boa B? Can you unmute yourself and let us know who you are? Boa B? If you can hear us, we're waiting for your comments. We'll give you a few more minutes to figure, a few seconds to figure out the unmute button. Did you ask him to unmute?
I have.
Or them? We, I'll give you another few seconds and then we'll have to move along. Our online individual with their hand up. I'm sorry that we weren't able to take your comment today, but if you would like to email us, you can do that and we can maybe feature, or you can join us at our next meeting to make your comment. I guess we will un-promote them. I still have trouble with Zoom. It's like five years of it and I still can't do it sometimes. Okay. So is anyone else present that wants to make a comment? All right. If not, then we will move on to our discussion update of the Climate Action Plan Committee. And Mr. Hasha is with us tonight. And are you doing the slides, Nick?
Yes, I have them.
Good evening, Mr. Hasha.
Good evening. Is this thing on?
It is.
So I had to, it's a lot of content when you talk about getting to net zero by 2050. So I have a script here to try to keep myself.
You want to introduce yourself real quick.
I'm sorry. I'm Alex Hasha. Good reminder. The Chair of the Climate Action Planning Committee and resident of Milton as well.
Thank you and thank you for your service on the committee.
Thank you. And thank you for the opportunity to share the progress report with you tonight, what we've been working on since we last reported in September, and to get your feedback and support for our work. So since the Climate Action Planning Committee may be new to some of you, I wanted to start with a brief review of our mission and our charge from the Select Board. Can we go to slide two, please? So our committee's mission is to advise and engage the Milton community on how to mitigate the damaging impacts of climate change. Next slide, please. And our charge from the Select Board defines how we go about doing that, which is that we're to prepare a climate action plan for consideration by town meeting that addresses the strategies and best practices for reducing community-wide greenhouse gas emissions in alignment with the targets set by Massachusetts law. Additionally, we're supposed to do this via a process that engages residents, experts, and other stakeholders and integrates with existing town bylaws, policies, and processes. Next slide, please. So when we say in alignment with the targets set by Massachusetts law, I think it's worth a reminder for folks in the audience who haven't seen this before, like what that means. So in 2021, Massachusetts passed a landmark climate law that commits the state to achieving net zero emissions of climate warming pollution by 2050. And achieving this goal requires starting now with technologies available today. So Massachusetts' strategy relies on promoting energy efficiency and electrification, which is transitioning from fossil fuels to electricity for heating, cooling, and transportation, and at the same time, making enormous investments to expand the supply and reliability of clean electricity and to maintain the capacity of our natural and working lands to absorb the remaining emissions. That's the net and net zero. Next slide, please. So where does Milton's climate warming pollution come from? The top sources are transportation, buildings, gas leaks, and solid waste. 53% comes out of our tailpipes. 42% goes to heat, cool, and power our homes and buildings. Roughly 3% comes from natural gas and refrigerant leaks. And the last 2% comes from management of our solid waste stream. And we've estimated the natural greenery in our town can absorb about 6% of that greenhouse gas emissions each year. From 2017 to 2022, which are the two recent years we have emissions inventories for Milton's greenhouse gas emissions, increased by 3.6%. So we're going in the wrong direction and we need to turn things around. Next slide, please. All right. So very small text here, apologize for that. This slide summarizes some of the key outcomes that state planning has identified as necessary to meet Massachusetts' climate goals. We must work towards a majority of existing buildings completing energy efficiency renovations, ensure that fossil fuel heating equipment is overwhelmingly replaced with electric heat pumps at the end of life, while preventing refrigerant leaks, which can be difficult, install lots of solar, replace the vast majority of vehicles with electric or non-emitting alternatives, and drastically improve access to and safety of alternate modes of transport. It requires achieving a dramatic reduction in solid waste disposal because in-state landfills will be closing in the next decade and diverting food waste to compost facilities. Massachusetts also needs to proactively maintain our forests and significantly expand tree cover and land in permanent conservation status. Next slide, please. So I want to, I want to pause at this point and acknowledge how daunting or even paralyzing those goals are. I think any reasonable person should have doubts about whether they can be achieved by 2050. But we shouldn't let timeline anxiety become an excuse not to get started. The best available science says that net zero by 2050 will give the world the best possible shot at avoiding the worst potential impacts of climate change, but it's not a binary outcome. Qualitatively, sooner is better. So we should get started and move with as much urgency as we practically can. So we've focused on identifying a set of near-term actions, things that we can do in the next two years to start moving in the right direction. And the goal is to build momentum, start learning, and build our capacity for action. So to begin meaningful implementation, we need to mobilize town resources. Our top recommendations here are hire a sustainability director or otherwise expand staff capacity. Many towns have been successful with leadership roles focused on sustainability and these roles often pay for themselves through the grants that they bring in. Milton's new energy manager that will be shared with Randolph is a great start, but their scope is limited to municipal facilities. And we'll also need engagement from existing staff and departments on these goals. Second, we should work towards climate leader community certification. This is the state's framework to help municipalities meet the climate goals and will give us access to technical support and grant funds, and more on this in a minute. And that will help with item three, because we need resources for feasibility and cost studies. We've, we've missed opportunities in the recent past due to lack of matching funds and our inability as a volunteer committee to effectively navigate the town's budget process in a timely way. And we need help from the experts on that stuff. And finally, we need to improve the town's capacity to reach residents with important and urgent communications. This is for, you know, emergency situations, managing climate risk, but also for sharing with town residents this, this kind of work. And could you skip forward to slide 13, please? When I practiced this later, I realized that that should come next. So I want to dive a bit deeper on the climate leader community certification quickly because I think it has the potential to really help us get the ball rolling on this work. So a quick overview of this. The program is, is like a Green Communities 2.0, aimed at helping communities like ours meet the state's climate goals. Where Green Communities focuses on energy efficiency at municipal facilities, climate leaders expands the scope of that to match the ambitions of the 2021 climate law and help municipalities implement broad-based emission reductions. Achieving certification would make us eligible for grants up to $150,000 for planning and technical assistance and up to $1 million for the actual projects. Next slide, please. And so pursuing the climate leader certification isn't just about qualifying for grants, it's also a concrete way to get the ball rolling on implementation. The program lays out a clear, structured process with technical assistance and grant support along the way. And there are six requirements, of which Milton has already completed three. We're a green community in good standing. We've established a climate advisory committee, this one. And we adopted the specialized Stretch Energy Code at the May 2024 town meeting. The remaining requirements are making a commitment to eliminate onsite fossil fuel use in municipal buildings by, municipal operations, sorry, by 2050. Our plan calls for this and I, I think this requirement would be fulfilled when the Select Board and/or town meeting gives the endorsement we're seeking. Completion of municipal decarbonization roadmap study. So crucially, this is a well-defined process with technical assistance available from DOE-R and consultants who specialize in helping towns with these kinds of studies. Finally, the last requirement is adopting a zero emission vehicle first policy in municipal fleet procurement. And I still honestly have questions about what this means in practice, but we can start looking at peer communities like Wellesley that have done this to understand what it looks like in practice. So working towards this certification would help us meet several of our near-term priorities, especially around municipal building studies and fleet planning. And it would position us to unlock up to $1 million in grants for implementation projects. In short, this is, I think, one of the most practical, practical and actionable next steps that we can take. Could you go back to slide nine, please? Awesome. So now I'd like to run quickly through our top near-term recommendations in each of the major emissions categories. So to reduce, next slide, the, yeah, reducing building emissions. So first, we should launch an energy coaching program to help residents navigate energy upgrades and electrification. Again, the vast majority, because Milton is a predominantly residential town, most of the building emissions come from privately owned homes. And the projects that are involved are still unfamiliar and intimidating for many people, most people. So it's critical to focus on early adopters and make sure that they have good outcomes and tell their neighbors about the good outcomes they're having. We need to be identifying pain points and pitfalls and helping people avoid them. And we should also be addressing any obstacles that the town controls, such as in zoning and inspection approvals. Quite a few other towns have done this and there are models that we can follow that are discussed in the, in the Climate Action Plan. Second, we should conduct electrification and energy efficiency studies for all municipal buildings and fold that into capital planning, especially for schools where HVAC systems are reaching end of life. And completing the climate leader community's municipal decarbonization roadmap study, say that three times fast, would take us a long way towards, towards this outcome. Third, we should accelerate the transition to clean, zero emission electricity in town by increasing the green energy content of the default tier of Milton's community electricity aggregation program. And four, ensure the town itself is leading by example and purchasing clean electricity as well. Next slide, please. On transportation, we think there's more baseline research required to understand private transportation patterns and identify opportunities to support zero emission vehicles and reduce vehicle miles traveled. So we should be collecting and reporting mode of transportation data to and from schools and partnering with local employers to support alternatives to solo driving like carpooling programs. We also recommend leading by example by one, working toward a zero emission vehicle first policy for the municipal fleet, maybe in stages, as some vehicles are harder to electrify than others. And begin planning now for eventual electrification of the school bus fleet. We know that the school bus contract was recently renewed, but it will require time to prepare for this step, so we should start looking into it. Next slide, please. In forest and watershed conservation efforts, they're going to be important to maintain Milton's capacity to sequester carbon and mitigate climate change risks to health and property. So the working group focused on this is recommending that we assess risks to homes near the Blue Hills due to climate change, revitalize the shade tree committee budget and aim to plant at least 100 new trees per year, and begin collecting baseline data on tree stock in the Blue Hills. And I'll just say, we have a lot more recommendations and goals in all these topics. These are really like the next two or three that we recommend starting with. Slide 12, please. In the solid waste disposal, near-term recommendations really focus on improving our ability to partner with residents to improve the quality and reduce the volume of the waste stream. So to that end, the Waste Management Working Group is recommending developing a comprehensive community outreach plan to raise awareness and improve participation in sustainable disposal practices, establish a biannual internal waste audit process, so we have reliable data on what's being thrown away and where we can do better, and expanding access to drop-off locations for hazardous waste, e-waste, and compost, making it easier for residents to dispose of items safely and correctly. We didn't hear about the crash in Citizen Speak on Randolph, but a lot of people avoid Randolph Avenue, which is where our hazardous and sort of recycling program days are. So other sites might really expand adoption. And exploring regional partnerships also to grow these collection opportunities beyond what Milton can do on its own. All right. Slide 15. Yeah, switch forward. There we go. All right. So the most important message I want to leave you with is this. We're, we're really at the end of the phase where a volunteer committee working in isolation can make meaningful progress. It's been a lot of work over the last two years to get to the point where we have this draft. And what we need now is active engagement of town leaders, specifically the group sitting at the table here, to, to refine, prioritize, and ultimately endorse and resource the implementation of this plan. Many of the long-term emission reductions that we're shooting for depend on private action, but the early momentum can be seeded by the town itself through, through policies, investments, and leadership. And that requires coordination across departments and support from staff who report to you. So I'm definitely not asking for a rubber stamp. The plan is complex and it deserves your questions, your scrutiny, and your ideas. If something feels infeasible, let's talk about what is feasible and let's, let's move the needle. All right. And to be honest, while climate targets often get framed as like, do this by 2050 or else, the real truth is we can only go as fast as we can go, but we do need to start moving. So I hope we can do that together with, with purpose and urgency now. Thanks, and I look forward to your questions.
Thank you very much. Questions from the board? I have about 12 written down, so I'm not going to go first.
I'll, I'll start with just a comment before we go into your 12. Thank you first for your work on this and coming to present this to us. Having gone through this, it is a lot. As you said, it's daunting. And I would ask, is there a way for the Select Board or the Climate Action Committee to lay out a potential roadmap? There are points that said, let's do this, let's do this, but how do we know the points under that? Right? So if it's changing electrification, sustainability, changing the vehicle first, or even getting this climate leader certification, what are the steps that we need to take? I think what I saw as a board was, as a board member looking at it, said, this looks great, but what are the next steps to actually get this ball rolling, instead of saying, these are the things that we should do? So is that part of our partnership next to say, what is, where is the town now and what are the steps we take to progress to some of these points or directives that you have given us?
Right. So, so sort of a meta-answer to that question, that's a tough project management.
Yeah.
Project. We don't have a project manager on the climate committee or, it's tough to do things in that organized a way with the group that we've got and the time that we've got. So this, when I ask for more staff capacity, I would hope that town's, town staff capacity could help project that degree of organization on this that you're talking about. To actually give you an answer, I think that this climate leader certification process and this has sort of been a recent learning for me, that this municipal decarbonization roadmap study that they require is actually a well-defined process with like spreadsheet templates and, and free technical assistance through DOE-R and consulting companies that can't wait to work with us on this. So I think committing to doing that and coming up with the, whatever resources are required to get that moving.
So what you're saying, I'm hearing is perhaps the step that would be there for us is some version of project management to say, these are the points that we would need.
Because you're asking for a roadmap and they say you have to produce a roadmap to get this money. We all want a roadmap, right? So, and they, they have a process for producing the roadmap. I'm not a, I'm a financial data scientist. I'm not a, you know, environmental consultant. Would love to get an environmental consultant helping us with this stuff, so.
Thank you.
I think that's part of it as well.
Mr. Colley?
My, mine is a follow to Mr. Daley's is like the same thing. What is, what is the priorities list? I see, you know, a director or something in here, you know, what's, what's the first step? It sounds like you're looking for more staff or something like that because the volunteers have reached their limit. So, you know, what is the, I guess what I would ask is what is that first, most important first step for us to take? Not so much for the, towards the goals as towards the organization, like what do we need in place to make these things happen? And I'd also like to say, I, I'm in the industry. I'm involved in it all the time and I totally, I worry about it. I have children and children and I, I worry about the future for them, so I'm happy to help in any way I can.
Yeah, I mean, I think prioritization needs to be a discussion between our committee and, and you. We have put a lot more time into researching these areas of action and I think within the committee, folks. the committee, folks focus on different things. So if you ask me personally, uh, I'm really interested in the, the building emissions section of the plan. Um, I feel like there's a lot of sort of actionable, um, it's clear what needs to happen. Uh, I, I feel more daunted by the transportation sector, but we have some folks, uh, in this room who know a lot more about transportation sector than I do. Um, so I think that should be a conversation, right? And we're, we're trying to lay out some options, uh, and prioritization should focus on, you know, where the emissions are. So I put transportations and buildings first for a reason. That's 98, 95% of the emissions, so we should be doing something there. But, uh, yeah, I mean, the, I, I think that, yeah, I shouldn't get the last word on what the priorities are, uh, if that, if that makes sense. And now I would just come back to the climate leader certification process. I think that could really, uh, give us a, a, a completable project. And after completing that project, um, I think we'd all feel like we have a, a much firmer grasp on what we're trying to do, because creating that roadmap is part, part of the deliverables.
But we, I think we as a board can get it to be part of everybody's thinking. I mean, as the first step, facilities is thinking about it, public works is thinking about it with all the, you know, we gotta get it to be in everybody's mind, you know, so every time, so they're aware of it.
Right.
And, and the public too, obviously, and the public too.
I think by, by, um, the town needs to lead by example. It's, municipal operations are 2% of total emissions and our goal here is all of them, town-wide, that's mostly private and commercial. But if the town is doing it legit, it legitimizes it quite a bit, right? And then coming back to your comment, getting them thinking about it, that's really all we can ask for, right? I, I, even I, I think don't live in a fantasy land where like the town is going to pay double, triple, just whatever, whatever it costs to make this happen exactly is written in a, this plan. It's ridiculous. But if, I think, given the urgency of the problem, if we're not giving, uh, sort of clean energy products, uh, we're not incorporating them in our planning, I think that's irresponsible at this point, right? If, if we do the planning and it's like, oh, the fossil fuels, fuel system is half the cost, uh, that's, that's a tough conversation, right? But I think even, even with, um, backsliding on federal subsidies, I think there, there's still a strong, um, economic case for a lot of these technologies and we just have to do the planning and design work to give them a chance.
Mr. Daley?
Um, looking at the decarbonization commitment that, that you shared, um, it says the towns have to create our own decarbonization roadmap. So in one of your suggestions, it's, um, hiring a sustainability director, which we don't currently have, but do we know of any grants or ways that perhaps we could have someone in an interim basis? I think right now in terms of town capacity, who would we give this charge? To say, what are the first 15 things over the next two to three years that we would need to do? John, to your point of internalizing it in all of our municipalities, all the public works, how do we get it to DPW, to police and fire, talking about electrified vehicles or changing the way we, you know, restore our fleet, whether that's, you know, patrol cars or anything, the snowplows, I don't know what, what the availabilities are. But it seems that we need to have a real comprehensive cohesive plan created by someone and it certainly isn't on us to have volunteers do that further. So maybe that's the first step for us is how do we increase our capacity even in a temporary, you know, six to eight months to then get this roadmap and put it into place?
I think that's a good question, Mr. Milano. Do you want to, uh, uh, pine on it a little?
Yes, I, I think, as Alex alluded to it, is that we do have the grant that we received through Mass Safe Program with Randolph for a shared energy manager position. So that is, you know, he mentioned, you know, a municipal focus, but in terms of getting the focus and the discussion started with, with our departments, that is what that position is there for. That position will be split between Milne and Randolph, but it is an opportunity to, to leverage that, to access the grants that Alex alluded to. Um, you know, the town is compliant now with MBTA Community, so that does open up more options in terms of grant opportunities. Green Communities Program is one of them that was identified as requiring compliance. So, um, the door does open on that in terms of, um, potential opportunities, but I think that is, in terms of capacity, that position is posted and available, um, for app, taking applications now, so hopefully by the fall we'll have somebody in that role and can start moving on some of the items that have been identified here, um, as it relates to kind of the town focus, town and school focus, I should say.
Do you think that some of this work would also fall under the purview, like when the planning department gets staffed up? Would they help out with some of this or?
It, it can vary. I mean, having that capacity in town hall for projects is always helpful and, and I'll note that Josh Eckert Lee, who I'm sure did yeoman's work with, with you, um, who was the assistant planner, um, he was very interested in this work, so, you know, wanted to work on it and so we gave him that, you know, leeway and, and capacity to do so. So I think that's where, as we hopefully get back to full staffing, we'll have a little bit more capacity and you add in the energy manager as well. Um, and I'll note just as another example, the capital budget for fiscal '26 includes an appropriation, um, to start examining the HVAC systems in schools through the facilities department. So that is, you know, it's not a project to go replace systems, but it's to say, you know, where are they in terms of end of life? We know they're approaching end of life. What are the right projects for us to consider moving forward? Um, so, you know, we've, because Milton's been part of Green Communities for so long, we've done a lot of the, kind of the easy ones. We've done the lighting, um, we've done solar on town and school facilities, so it's, it's now, it's getting into the bigger projects in terms of the mechanical systems and other types of improvements.
Yeah, I mean, you know, and also too, when you're thinking of candidates, it's probably a good idea to consider somebody who has strong experience in project and program management. I know for me, um, you know, we're, we're dialed in at work to the climate action, the 2050 plan for the state, um, and we have a whole program basically teed up and, you know, some strong project managers who are, I mean, like you, you have to scope all of these things and really chip away at them. I mean, I know that that's difficult to pull off in a municipality, but, um, you know, to Winston's point, Alex's point, having, um, having folks with strong project management skills is key. And I think I, I really enjoyed, um, the report that, you know, I, I need to go through it some more, um, and, you know, I thought that the presentation really made a lot of sense and, and aligns with, you know, in, in my professional expertise. Um, you know, I think the, the right next step is getting some, some organizational enablement and then pivoting that into the, basically doing the, the assessments, the gap analysis and then scoping out the, the projects that help us close those gaps. So, well done.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I just wanted to say, the, the folks who've been most focused on transportation have had to sort of step down from the committee this year due to other life commitments, so would love to have your creativity there.
Yeah, well, I think, so one of the questions that I had that maybe, you know, I, I did not get to go through the report in as much depth as I would have liked to, um, so one of the things that I, I will be kind of interested.
Your mic's working great.
It's good?
I can tell.
I now have, I have, it's in my head now. Um, I, um, I was, I didn't see as much on EV charging stations in town, but maybe I just sort of missed something, but I think that that's definitely, as somebody who recently got a hybrid EV, um, you know, I definitely, I definitely see the importance of, you know, having the chargers around town, especially if you don't have a fast charger hooked up to the side of your house yet. Um, I'm burning my fossil fuels a little, a little more frequently than I would like to, um, in my new car, but I think that, um, I think access to that is, is important.
Yeah, on that specific topic, actually, um, this is a good opportunity to sort of elucidate how we work. So we are organized into working groups on each of these emissions categories, uh, and, and so I was not on the transportation working group and I also was a little surprised not to see EV charging sort of closer to the top.
Okay, so I didn't miss it?
You didn't, it's in the plan, it's not on the top, the key actions for the next few years.
Yeah.
Um, and, and so that's a conversation, um, within the committee and I'm sort of reporting their recommendations faithfully. I will say, I think it, it bears studying, uh, for where are the populations within Milton for whom access to public EV charging is a barrier to adoption, cause we have so many single-family zoned houses, houses with driveways. So maybe the bigger lever is, you know, streamlining permitting for home installations. And I, I'm not saying that's true, I'm just saying, um, I feel like we need a little more information.
Yeah.
Uh, to know how many EV chargers we need, where, where they ought to be.
Yeah, I mean, I know some towns, like nationally, when, when this issue is analyzed, sometimes like the low hanging fruit is like multifamily housing and, and that sometimes, um, addresses access issues. Um, but yeah, that, I think you're right, it's that, you know, unpacking where the, where the need is or where, where charging, where EV adoption could be encouraged by placing the, the fast chargers.
Yeah, so thank you, that's a great example, um, when I say that you, we're not looking for a rubber stamp and it's a draft, right? So it's not, not at all too late to take things out or put things in.
Other questions for the members?
You haven't asked your 12 questions.
I know, well, you guys have gotten to some of them, you'll be, you'll be pleased to hear. Um, so, uh, first of all, thank you. Um, I, I've been chair of the select board for, uh, a little over two months and it's probably two months too long, um, since we've been able to have you come in and, and present. We, our dockets been a little full lately, but I'm, I'm really delighted that we had this meeting to start. Um, uh, you know, I think with what happened in Texas this past week, um, with the news recently about earth retaining heat faster than, than expected or more than expected, I think climate changes on a lot of people's minds. I think the feeling of hopelessness that you addressed at the beginning is also on people's mind and I think it's really important that folks know that we, we have the power to, to make a difference at the local level. Um, and nothing's more, more powerful than, than what you've presented as a, as a volunteer committee of really concrete steps that we can take as a group. And I, I share my colleagues' questions sort of about, um, creating a roadmap or an action plan out of these suggestions, cause I think they're great and it would be lovely to see like, you know, how this works and I understand the, the limits that your committee has. Um, so to get to my, uh, specific questions, um, so on solar, uh, you, you mentioned, you brought up solar and encouraging early adoption of solar, then you mentioned an energy coaching program. I know that, uh, and we've talked about this a little bit on this, on the select board before, um, one of the big hurdles for folks is they don't know which solar companies to trust. Uh, cause there's, you know, we all get emails, texts, everything, um, sort of promising outlandish things for, you know, for, for solar panels. And then you, you mentioned this energy coaching program and so I'm wondering if that is a way, and was it Wellesley that you mentioned that has a?
No, I mentioned Wellesley because they're one of the first climate leader certified communities and so they've done a zero energy, a zero emission first energy, uh, fleet policy. So I, I have tons of questions about what that means.
I have questions on that one too.
Yeah.
Um, but for, for this one, I'm just curious about what an energy coaching program, what is that specifically?
Thank you so much, this is my favorite recommendation.
I didn't know that.
My dream is to get past all this planning stuff, get, get this, everybody bought in and working on it and then I want to be part of this coaching volunteer, coaching program volunteer support, because, um, uh, so I actually, uh, received help from a, a volunteer-driven, um, heat pump installation coaching program when I did my home heat pump conversion. And it was, it was a four-year process, cause I wanted to do everything right and be able to like advocate for people. Um, and it, if you have a, a sort of nerdy disposition, you can get lost in, in the details for sure. Contractor selection is a huge pain point for all, all of these things. And so almost all the coaching, I'm aware of several coaching programs, I added a section to the Climate Action Plan about them, uh, uh, thanks to, uh, questions from Nick Milano when he, um, you know, gave us, gave his feedback on the first draft of the plan in April. Um, so there are quite a few, uh, examples for us to look at. They usually incorporate, um, uh, sort of broad educational outreach component, like mark, you know, digital and, um, print marketing, just to raise awareness. But then an intake funnel where people say, hey, I want to do this, and then you get paired usually with a volunteer coach, but there, there needs to be, it's typically somebody on-town staff who kind of manages the volunteer coaches. Um, and then it's, you know, somebody who is just a, um, you know, a fellow homeowner who's, has experience or is interested in this, who's sort of there to help you vet, um, proposals, understand, particularly with, with HVAC renovations, like the design process is really critical to a good outcome and it's so much easier to find somebody who will install heat pumps than to find somebody who will install them correctly, so.
A lesson you learned, hopefully not the hard way.
Yeah, and, and, and most of these coaching programs include, um, kind of vetted contractor Um, and there are other sources for that, so, but it, these are precisely the kind of problems that, um, coaching programs I think are, are necessary to solve at this stage of the adoption curve. I mean, I think it'll be slow until we get to a place where people are like, oh, my, my boiler's going, what should I do? And, and your average neighbor says, get a heat pump. Then it'll sort of take care of itself, or the market will take care of it, but we need to help it along.
No, I, I, I appreciate that. So that is an interesting, um, I, I'd be curious to know what other communities do to support a coaching program, like if they have, I, it doesn't sound like you would need a dedicated town staff person for the, just that program, but maybe it's part of a?
It's not, it's nobody's only job, but there's, it's somebody's job.
Right, right. Um, and that's, those are usually the most dangerous jobs, at least the ones that tend to not get done.
Often a sustainability director.
Yeah.
So, um, yeah, I can think of at least a half dozen and a nonprofit that is really eager to, to do, spin up more coaching programs with more towns, so.
That's, that's really, um, exceptional to hear. On the, um, so you mentioned the, the Wellesley Vehicle Program, so that was one of my questions and Mr. Daley kind of brought it up too. I'm just curious about fire engines and police cars and like, I, I can see the municipal fleets being, you know, that just the cars are probably pretty easy, but some of these other vehicles are, I would imagine, a little more difficult to get.
Yeah, I think it's safe to say his intuition is correct, right? Yeah. So, uh, I, all I could say, all I know at this point is, um, the language is something like, um, to purchase zero emission vehicles when, um, commercially available and practicable. So practicable, I think, is doing a lot of work in that sentence. I'm not sure exactly how much more expensive it has to be than fossil fuel equipment before it stops being practicable. Um, I don't think that it, that requirement is practical if it doesn't have some like cost carve-outs.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
And so I haven't had bandwidth to do this, but I would want to talk to Wellesley and, and any other community that's done this and say, how's this playing out? Cause I think Wellesley achieved the certification recently and their policy went into effect in fiscal year '26, so it's, it's new operationally. I don't know if they've bought any new vehicles since it went into effect, so.
Do we have any electric vehicles? Does the town?
Yeah, uh, the town has three administrative vehicles that are Nissan lease, um, that were bought, I think, I think they're 2019, so I don't know exactly when they were purchased. Um, but we haven't replaced any other administrative vehicles in that time span.
Yeah.
And I'll just add, the only, the other distinction in terms of practical would be, and as you know, in terms of the, you know, police and fire, police are running 24 hours for the vehicles that are in service. Obviously you could talk about cycling, fire is large apparatus, but then when you talk about DPW in terms of the frontline. But then when you talk about DPW in terms of the frontline, snow response might be running, you know, significant duration for many hours in a row. So thinking about how to navigate through that is the other issue. But in terms of administrative vehicles, I think that's certainly a place where we are looking. And the capital budget, again, this year does have a $50,000 appropriation to build out additional vehicle EV charging locations, to add capacity at Town Hall. And then there would be additional funding remaining from that that might be able to leverage some grant funding, you know, design them, and then leverage the grant funding to purchase and install. So there's a couple of different options and pathways that are already funded through existing and ongoing capital requests.
And I wondered, and you wouldn't know if Wellesley uses like carbon offsets or anything like that, because I just can't imagine they've swapped their whole snowplow fleet out for electric.
I'd be willing to bet a lot of money that they have, they still have fossil fuel vehicles in their municipal fleet. And it's a policy to...
Replace when possible.
Yeah, prefer. And I read over their policy yesterday, and it has a hierarchy in it of, you know, battery EVs are best and hybrid EVs after that. And so I'm optimistic that there's some sort of reasonable trade-offs that can happen there in practice, but we definitely need to learn more.
Great. Okay. Well, in the interest of time, Alex, I have your phone number, as you know, so I can always follow up with specific questions. There's two more that I wanted to get to, though. First, on the waste side, have you been speaking with DPW about some of these waste recommendations? And you've probably seen, for example, that we've started a municipal compost, which is fantastic. But I'm curious about how much interface you've had with DPW.
So for most of the existence of the committee, the, Jack Turner, the previous environmental coordinator, was staffing the committee and also participating in the waste working group. Arthur Doyle, and I apologize to the other members of that group, who, I'm blanking on their names. But, so there's a group within the committee that's been focused on that. And I think they are getting sort of connected with our new environmental coordinator, Cassandra Calabro, who's been great so far. But she also, I know, you know, the DPW's overburdened and understaffed. And so that, you know, she hasn't been able to prioritize working with us to the same extent yet.
So then, so my final question is, I think it probably should be a goal of this town, and I'd be curious to go back through the warrants and figure it out, but we should probably have a climate something in each of our town warrants as we go, you know, into the next few years. Because I can imagine somebody looking back 50 years from now and saying like, God, look, they didn't talk about, even have anything. And we have done things like, you know, the increasing energy efficiency. But if we had to, or if we wanted to put something in this fall's town warrant, knowing that we're not going to be able to do something that would be, you know, fiscally expensive at short term, what would be a recommendation that you have? I had some thoughts from this, but I'd be curious about what you think would be a good goal to put something in the town, in the fall town warrant.
So there was, in terms of things that actually require, would benefit from a sort of representative approval from residents, that is not astronomically expensive, perhaps increasing the renewable energy content of our CEA program, right? So that's really a story of accelerating the transition to fully clean electricity through a voluntary action, right? Because the state has a renewable energy portfolio standard where the green energy content of the grid is required to go up every year, and the utilities and generating companies are working towards that. But you can go above and beyond that by buying renewable energy credits. We already give Milton residents the ability to opt into a 100% green product, but obviously the default tier is the one the vast majority of people are on. But just to give you an idea of costs, in our current contract, the difference between 10% additional renewable electricity and 100% is less than a penny per kilowatt hour. And we're recommending going from 10 to 20. It should be pretty negligible in terms of the additional cost to an average Milton resident. And the CEA program has saved the average Milton resident...
Well, thank you.
More than $1,000 in energy bills over the last several years. Thanks for bringing that up. So I think that's something where, you know, in the last contract cycle, the select board was reluctant to just last-minute endorse a, something that would increase people's energy bills even a tiny bit. But it probably would be easy for town meeting to say, this is important, and we as a town would support that, so. It's just my first thought.
It's a great suggestion.
It's a great question. I hadn't thought about that before.
The stated goal of being zero net by 2050 is part of the, part of the CLC goals, right? The climate leadership goals.
Mm-hmm.
Is that something that also we could have town?
That also, yes. So actually, since we got the charge, I have wondered what that clause for the consideration of town meeting would mean in practice. I know that in kind of 2020, 2021, there were a rash of towns passing town meeting articles declaring a climate emergency. And that's gone out of fashion pretty hard. But, so, and those are purely symbolic, too. So I think that was the feedback I got early on in Milton, that like, what's the point of doing a purely symbolic town meeting article? And I kind of agree. So, but I'd love to work with you on, you know, what is a more meaningful commitment that town meeting could make to these goals? Again, I think the idea of like, we commit come hell or high water, no matter, you know, how expensive this stuff gets or how little support we get, or if the state abandons its goal. I mean, a lot could happen in 30 years.
Yeah. Well, hell and high water are both in the forecast, unfortunately.
Yes.
So that's helpful. I think it would be, just thinking about the timing for the fall town meeting, we have to have articles to the warrant, we've promised the warrant committee that we won't spring anything on them. And so we have to have articles to them by early August, is it?
Yes.
When's the next meeting of your committee?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Well, can I ask?
Please, yeah.
Would it be a, you know, I think the charge of the committee was ultimately that the Climate Action Plan would be approved or adopted by the town meeting. Do you think the runway is ready for fall for that, or is that more of an annual focus?
That, I break into cold sweat thinking about that. Because this is still in draft form. I think it, I wouldn't want to rush the review and refinement process. I also, from the beginning, I thought, this is a long document to ask every town meeting member to read and approve the whole thing. So I would definitely appreciate some thought partnership on...
I mean, the advantage of doing it...
What to put in front of them, yeah.
The advantage of doing it in the spring is that you get more time to prepare. The disadvantage is that you will have undoubtedly some new town meeting members who will have, you know, three or four days to read through the warrant, including this. I mean, hopefully, if they're running for town meeting, they're doing a little homework in advance. But whereas if you did it in the fall, the town meeting folks would kind of be on notice, and they'd probably have a little less to read through, and they'd have a little more time to do it. So I think it's, it's kind of, maybe turns back to you of like, do you think?
I think, on that timeline, an article directing the select board and the town to do this, like, get this done, get the plan done, you know, work towards climate leader certification, that would, I mean, you tell me, but I think that would probably help you...
Sure.
Have the mandate to prioritize this differently than it's been prioritized until now.
So maybe then for next steps, Mr. Milano and I can work with you to think about what one or two draft articles could look like, and then we can bring them back to this group to discuss about putting them on the warrant. Is that, I just want to make sure that, you know, I appreciate this work, and we want to review the whole thing. But I, you know, knowing that we do need to take these little steps, kind of want to identify what those little steps might be in the short term. John?
And the other factor is the urgency of this. You know what I mean?
Exactly.
This is urgent. If we're not perfectly ready, but we're doing it sooner, it may be a trade-off.
I agree with that 100%.
We should certainly talk to DOER about if they have any sort of concrete requirements for complying with that, I don't want to use the word comply, for meeting that eligibility requirement. Be good to incorporate that in our discussion.
Great.
So in doing that, I'd like to volunteer my help, too, so whatever.
Oh, well, thank you very much. All right. Well, we can, we can use always another set of eyes on something.
So what would be our goal there for spring or for October town meeting?
So I think we definitely want to have something for the October town meeting, whether it's...
And it sounds like this commitment to eliminating onsite fossil fuel use by the town by 2050, maybe that becomes, the version of a warrant article checks that box for climate leaders, and also that might be a pathway to go. So that is, it's a little bit less of an ask than the whole report, but it kind of underscores the whole purpose that we're working towards here. And we can, that might be a way to approach it, and it's not as heavy a lift for a fall town meeting in terms of preparing it from there.
And I, yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking. I do also, though, like Mr. Hasha's idea of at least maybe starting the conversation around moving from 10 to 20%, those are the, that's the sort of thing where we can easily get numbers of like, what's the average electricity bill in Milton? Like, what's that going to cost people? I'm on the 100% plan, so, and I have solar, so. But again, I would have loved an energy coach three or four years ago when I was getting my solar put in, so.
And that's what I was going to say. I haven't made the transition in it because I need an energy coach to help me through the process.
Yeah, yeah. So I think from a town staffing position, we can, we can make that call on a town position as a board. And so maybe for a future meeting, we can have a discussion, and it would be great to include members of the committee as well in terms of helping us think about what that position might look like.
Okay.
Any final questions for Mr. Hasha?
Can I just make a comment?
Please, yes.
I just would like to, and I know everybody thinks, but Alex is the type of volunteer that does yeoman's work in Milton, and that's, you know, I just wanted to acknowledge the many hours that I know went into this work and just thank it. The worker bees like Alex, and we're lucky to have so many of them, but they make a big difference in our ability to do our work. And also for a little bit of pressure to keep pulling us in a good direction, so we appreciate it.
Yes. Very important. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for making the time tonight. I really enjoyed this, and I hope it's the beginning of lots of long email threads.
We can look forward to emails.
Thank you, Alex.
And thank you to the Smiths for cheerleading over here, too. We always love to see our neighbors.
Thank you.
All right. So, moving on, we have the discussion approval, update approval of the Milton Budget Coordination Committee appointments.
I think we skipped item five today.
Oh, we didn't? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. It's just the MBTA communities. I don't know why. Item number five is the discussion approval of MBTA Communities Act District Compliance Application. Mr. Milano?
Sure. Thank you. So just picking up on our meeting, our discussion at our meeting on June 30th, the district compliance application is due to HLC by July 14th. And I just want to take a moment, there is kind of two separate, but in this case correlated things that we need to do to wrap up the bylaws that were approved by the town meeting. So any bylaw change, whether zoning or general bylaws, needs approval of the municipal law unit. So in the wake of the town meeting, the town clerk will prepare reports to the Attorney General's Municipal Law Unit for their review of both zoning and general bylaws. So that is being prepared and will be submitted by the town clerk separately. For MBTA communities specifically, there's a separate application process where HLC is seeking information about the zoning bylaw that has been approved for compliance with MBTA communities and the regulations associated with that. As part of the application, they do require proof that the town has submitted through the town clerk the materials to the Attorney General's Municipal Law Unit. So those are two of the requirements that are included as part of this. The district compliance application is, essentially repeats a lot of the information that has been shared with the HLC previously in terms of what the districts are, what the housing unit requirements are within the districts. So it identifies each of the districts and describes them very briefly in terms of zoning density. It also asks questions about affordable housing and any requirements in the bylaw around affordable housing. So I had prepared a draft application that was in the members' packet. The remaining piece, an element that will need to be submitted, is two things from the town clerk, which is, the first thing I referenced, which is the submission to the municipal law unit. And then they also ask for a letter from the town clerk attesting that the current bylaws are all the bylaws that have been adopted recently. Just, they just want to make sure there's nothing that would be conflicting that they're not aware of. And everything is up to date and will be up to date, so that town clerk's letter will accompany it. So the full application will include the application I included in here, the backup information prepared by UTIL in terms of the district-by-district spreadsheets and parcel information, which I included in the packet, and then the town clerk's materials.
Okay. Questions from the members?
So is this, is this a mirror of what was approved by town meeting, Article Six?
Yes. It is, all it does is describe what was in Article Six.
Okay.
Other questions?
And then they'll, as part of their review, they're going to confirm that all the backup materials that we submit align with what the actual zoning text says. So if there's any discrepancies between the two, HLC will identify that and try to figure out why. So if, for example, one unit was supposed to be a unit capacity of 50 units an acre, and the zoning, the parameters in the spreadsheet say it was 50 units an acre, but the zoning bylaws says 25, well, that's going to be a problem, and they'll identify. That's the kind of review they're doing compared to the backup and the materials we submit here with a line-by-line review of the bylaw itself.
Other questions? Mr. Cohen? I had 12 questions for climate change.
I just wanted to speak again. And I hope we can put our differences aside for a moment. It's something I think we should always strive to do, which requires an open mind. I always strive to be as factual as I can with documents to back up those facts that I present. And I have them here with me tonight, and I can share with anybody who wants them. We submitted an action plan back in February. There was an email from Mr. Milano, which I read from, in which we stated that the, I have a separate letter which includes language recommended by Peter Mello for this action plan, for our action plan back then. And also attached to that email was our 25% action plan. And in the cover letter, it was stated, and this was again prepared by Peter, and I can share all of this, but that the, "The town of Milton submits this action plan only to the extent required under 760 CMR 7209 (4), and hereby expressly reserves all rights, including without limitation, the right to challenge the validity or enforcement of any provisions of 760 CMR 7201." And the action plan was approved by HLC with that reservation. So tonight, I'm asking for the same language we included in that cover letter for that plan to be included in our compliance application, which we are discussing and approving now, or we may be delaying it slightly. We will be approved. Our plan will be accepted. But if anything happens to us down the road, we have reserved the right to challenge. We don't know what this will do to our town. On top of that, as I'm sure you've all heard, the state is anticipating federal cuts, and that will necessitate state cuts in school funding, which the governor has already announced. This is coming at a time when we just approved, thankfully, a massive override for the schools, and we are in the process of building a new school. I personally don't believe in the current situation especially, that we can take the chance that adding more homes won't increase our student population. Certainly, one cannot argue that whatever impact results... Certainly, one cannot argue that whatever impact results are, a 25% plan will be greater than a 10% plan. So I would argue again and like to propose a motion, no, a friendly amendment, in keeping with working together, that we include the same language in the cover letter to this submission as we did previously. I'm told that this can be seconded and that a person can still vote against it, that is, if you want a public vote, but I'm, I don't know what the proper wordage is, but I'm.
Okay. No, I, I hear what you're saying. Is that the end of your remarks? I don't want to interrupt.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just going to turn to Mr. Milano real quick. Was that the action plan that we did not submit in February? Because I didn't think we put an action plan forward in February.
Yeah, I would have to look back. I believe what we, I believe we prepared exactly what was described, and then the board voted actually not to submit an action plan at all, and we submitted a shorter letter basically saying, we're not submitting an action letter at this time, and that was.
That was my recollection, too.
This was my whole gripe back at that time that we talked about cover letter, cover letter, cover letter, and then we got an email from you, which, all of which I have, that said that the action plan had been submitted. And the action plan was the one I just quoted from that was prepared by, here it is, you know, Dear Secretary Augustus, I'm reading from it. This is the cover letter that went with the action plan.
What's the date on the, on the letter?
21st, February 21st.
Right, and then what ended up happening, and I, we prepared that accordingly, and what ended up happening is the board voted to actually not do that at all and just not submit an action plan. So we wrote a letter to the, to the secretary, and I just pulled it up, that opens with, at the time, the town is unable to submit an action plan because the town disagrees with the classification that Milton has placed in. That was dated February 14th. It's up on our website. It's what we submitted. And it goes on to talk about how the public comment period is still open and that we were seeking to see what the final regulations look like. So that was, we had prepared an action plan letter, as you described, assuming that the board would want to submit an action plan, and that was not the direction the board took at that time.
My main point, though.
Could I just respond to what Mr. Milano said?
Sure.
So that was my recollection as well. So in, in February, we had this deadline, I think it was the 14th or something like that, or maybe I'm conflating that with the July deadline, but there was a, there was a date in February that we had to submit an action plan. And the action plan at that point just said that we, as a town, committed to submitting a compliant plan by the July deadline. And if we had, if we'd submitted a plan that said, and it would lay out the course of like, we're going to have a town meeting on X date or on, in X month to, to review and approve plans. So what I had hoped to do at the, at the time in February was to, in order to get Milton back into a compliant status, to say, yes, let's do this action plan, and let's create language in it that makes it possible so that if we, if there is a change before a town meeting, or whatever town meeting ends up passing, if our classification status changes, that we can then, you know, we could then in July submit a 10% plan instead of a 25% plan because our status has changed. And the select board at the time was unwilling to even do that and just prepare, just was ready to go back into being non-compliant until we had, until the town meeting, which at the time, I thought was a huge mistake. I had attempted to compromise by saying, let's put an action plan together, let's use some of this word, verbiage that suggests that we have, you know, the ability to potentially change it before the July time, the town, the July deadline, excuse me. So I, I just want to be clear on the timeline for folks so that they understand that we, we didn't actually send that letter that you were quoting from. Unless, I don't know off the top of my head if the letter that we submitted in May at the instruction of the select board at that point had that language. I don't know if you have that letter available or not when we submitted.
Not in front of me. I don't believe there was a, the reservation of rights question, I don't believe had come up at the time. But I, I think the, Mr., sorry, Mr. Cohen, I think your point is more so include the reservation of rights language now.
And my, my point is that it was recommended by Peter. Whether the letter went out or not, at that time, it was recommended by Peter. And the draft of the letter included it word for word, what I just read.
We worked on it with consult, for sure.
So a lot of what went on in the past two weeks was all about reservation of rights.
Yes, we worked on it with Peter, we worked on that language, and then you voted against it.
I understand, which is, which brings me to my.
I mean, I don't want to put too fine a point on it.
I just want to bring it to my X issue is that we need to release the meeting notes of those two executive sessions.
Oh, that was an open session. That was an open session.
But beside from that, we need to release the meeting minutes from the two meetings, and, and I'd like to, I'd like them available to us select board members who are in the meeting as soon as possible. There's no reason why we can't see those.
I don't want to deviate from the, from the topic that we have, but I know that we're, we're working on, on those minutes. So I'm just, I'm just trying to make the point that that was the compromise language that I, that I had worked on with Peter and other folks six months ago to, to try to keep us in compliance.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, of course, Mr. Daly.
The two board members that were not present for this?
Yes.
So the letter in February was an action plan and really an intent to. Am I wrong in that? Like, we intend to submit something?
That, yes, and Mr. Milano and Mr. Cohen can correct me if I'm wrong, but in February, basically, once the new regulations had come out, then there was a new timeline that had come out for us to be compliant. Some towns, because they were already compliant, it didn't matter, but for towns like Milton that were at that time non-compliant, now had this new deadline in July. And so we, the part of the deadline was in February, sending to the state an action plan, which was very minimal of saying that we commit to by July 14th submitting a compliant plan. At the time, we did not end up submitting that letter. We ended up submitting a letter saying we are not submitting an action plan because we don't believe that we've been classified fairly.
So we had a, it was a letter to the state with, we intend to submit a plan, but at that time, we had certain cases that were still out there. And it was, we intend to submit along one line, but if the cases are different, we want to reserve the right.
Correct.
To change. But we didn't actually, it was not submitting our compliant plan.
No, it was just a.
So we don't have a cover letter that was on an actual compliant plan that went to the state.
That's correct. Yeah.
My, my point, though, is that in our latest conversations, meetings, you know, it was put out that Peter wasn't favoring a reservation of rights, and here, just a month ago, well, that's, that's why the meeting, that's why the meeting minutes need to come out.
The meeting, the minutes that come out, I'll say, the vote in those, in those meetings remains the vote. I don't believe that was Peter's stance that will come out in the meetings, whether he was for or against the reservation of rights. So I don't think that's, what's that question here? Peter said what he said in that, in the compromise that was made. We had a discussion about the reservation of rights and took a vote on it. That'll be reserved, that'll be shown in the minutes, right? I don't think it was based on Attorney Mello's sole recommendation one way or the other. I just wanted to get context on what the cover letter was for, where it was sent, and also the difference in the conversation that we had with new board members, different history in terms, and also a different place where we were and the decision we made about including it or not, right? Because we're talking about five months of, of history from February to July. So I think that is important as well to add into that. I'm not against your point. I understand it, and you're right to bring it, but I just want to get some history for where, where we were before we, before I was on the board and the reasoning.
Yeah, I, I think, if I may, we instructed, and again, I'm relying on my own memory here from February, but there was an earlier conversation, there was a conversation, it was maybe the end of January or first, last meeting of January, first meeting of February, about the action plan, where the board asked the, asked Peter to prepare a letter that allowed for this. So that was, it was a board instruction to Peter to, to create that letter with that language. So it wasn't that we asked Peter what his opinion was of that letter. He just gave us the best version that he thought of that had that language. So I wouldn't, I don't know, I don't think anybody at the time asked Peter, do you agree with this or not? It was more of an instruction to produce the letter. But I, I'll turn to Mr. Milano in case I'm misremembering.
I have, in, in your email, it says, the letter, be it a draft that wasn't submitted or not, the letter includes language recommended by Peter.
Okay. Okay. So, and then I think that you wanted to make a motion also.
Well, a motion or a friendly amendment, I'm.
I think it has to be, it has to be a motion.
So I'd like to make a motion to include reservation of rights, as I did last week, last meeting, a reservation of rights in our submission.
Okay, and I think we can open this up for discussion. I don't know.
Doesn't it have to be seconded first?
Well, we can have discussion and then, and then a second, but I, for the purposes of having a discussion, I'll second the motion. And then I'll say why I'm not going to vote for it.
I know.
But for the purposes of having, of having a discussion.
I learned that today, too. You can do that. I didn't think you could.
So, you know, I will say, when we drafted that language in February, it was really, we were trying to, we were juggling with a different set of circumstances, which were, that our, the classification question hadn't been definitive, well, in some folks' minds, it hadn't been definitively answered, I think being the most important one. Now, we've had court verdicts that have really, again, clarified the classification question. But moreover, there is no reason why if we are found to be, if something happens and we, our, our status changes, there's nothing that prevents the town from going back and changing this, the zoning language to being the 10% zoning language. The only thing that might happen is if somebody builds a three-unit building on their single-family property, then that would be their as of right to do. But barring those individual changes, it's, we would still have the right as a town to amend our, our, our zoning status. And I know that some people have made the argument that that's not true, that we've had that confirmed by multiple individuals that we can change back if we get reclassified. I think that we need to put this issue behind us and move forward. I think there's a lot of really pressing issues, some of which we've already heard about tonight, that this town is dealing with, and that's why I'm going to vote against it, because I, I also don't want to offer the false promise of a potential change in classification status, which I can't imagine is going to happen. I, I think it.
Why not? I can't understand why not include the reservation of rights.
Because it doesn't mean anything.
So they're neglected.
I, I don't like to include things in letters that don't mean anything.
Now you're making up a story. Why?
Why don't I include Mary had a little lamb in the letter? Like.
I can't understand for the life of me why this conversation about this, there's absolutely no reason. They'll accept our plan, we'll move forward like anything. I don't, there's only one reason, and I don't want to start an argument.
What's the reason?
I'm not going to say what I think is.
You can say it.
You have the time, you can say it.
It's all about my idea.
Oh, John.
Well, because it's your idea.
No.
No, 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 this whole, it's, it's, you know, we can't consider another, but why not put it in there? Why not? Why not?
I don't think it's good faith to put it in there.
You don't think what?
I don't think it's good faith to put it in there, because it doesn't do anything. It doesn't change the status quo.
Good faith. First, it was the law, we got to obey the law. Now we're obeying the law, now it's good faith. I mean, come on. Is that it?
I mean, yes, follow the law and act in good faith. I'm not going to apologize.
But now it's good faith, it's a totally other thing.
Is there a chance that HLC could reject what we submit, or could it really, like, raise eyebrows and we would have our compliance rejected if we include something like that? I mean, that's something that, like, that's, that's, that's my concern with it. I'm just being, you're, you're being honest, and that's just my, my concern with it, is if we include it, like, can we, does it create, like, an unnecessary, and I'm, I'm looking at Nick and asking, and I wasn't part of the conversation, the executive session, so I don't, but that would be the question I would have, or the reason I could think of not to do it.
I think HLC's, and I'm obviously projecting and kind of interpreting, I think at the end of the day, they're going to look to see if we have a zoning bylaw, and if the zoning bylaw parameters meet the requirements in the regs, and we do, the town meeting has approved that. And what is submitted as part of the district compliance application is just backup information that supports what is a, and a valid, in effect, bylaw in the town of Milton. So I think at the end of the day, that is the test they're applying.
So if we have extra words?
I don't, I, I can't guarantee anything, but I don't worry about it as much.
They might be like, oh, this is weird.
But we're submitting a compliant plan.
John, I want, I want to respond to what you said about this being, because it's your plan. And I, we've been, you, you were.
How I feel.
Not disregarding your feelings, you were in the executive session, the conversations that were there. None of this is about rejecting a plan because a certain person came up with it, right? I think we've all been very open and listened and entertained many ideas, and we've discussed them thoroughly. Questions have been asked. If folks come up with and say, I disagree that this is necessary, because I disagree that this is necessary, and you know that I do, and you know the questions that I asked, and I don't find it to be relevant. And as Ben said, and as Nick has agreed, if something changes with the zoning, nothing stops us from changing and moving back into what we had before, into whatever percentage is going to happen. We have had the cases that have been tried, we've had the decisions that have been made. Adding the extra language just seems, seems unnecessary. And just having the comfort of, oh, I put this on a cover letter, I don't think that's good process. And I don't want you to think, and I don't want it to misrepresent our process here as a board either, that we have dismissed out of hand anyone's ideas without having an actual discussion, right? Whether it was this, whether it was joining five and six at town meeting, we have gone above and beyond to talk to people. And I think that messaging that's been sent out there, that people are being blocked, or people are not being heard, or people's thoughts don't matter and people are being blocked, I think that's dangerous to say, because I don't think that's been our process. I think we've been very open to listening, everyone, and no matter what the situation is, even if it's MBTA or anything else. I don't think in any of our sessions have we looked at each other and said, no, I don't care what you're going to say, I'm not going to listen, I'm not going to go with it.
Well, we, we just heard Nick say that there's no threat to anything, so why not include it?
Well, so I think that there's two, if I, if I may attempt to answer your question, I think that there are a couple of factors. So there, there is just the simple, like, legal factor of, it doesn't matter, so put it in, and it won't affect compliance, which, there's no guarantees, but I tend to agree with Mr. Milano, probably, you know, unless somebody's feeling particularly vindictive, we're not going to, it's not going to endanger anything. But then the second, the second, and I, and to my mind, more important message is the message that it sends to the folks of Milton, which is that there is a, a hope or a path that somehow all of the work that has been done by the planning board, by UTEAL, by this board, by town meeting, for hours and hours and hours of debate, is still potentially going to be thrown out the window for, for causes yet to, to be identified, and that then the folks who have made this, they're sort, they're, you know, a passionate issue of theirs, will continue to sort of agitate for a reclassification that's, that is legally not possible. And so in my mind, it's much more the latter than the former, that is the reason why I'm, I'm voting the way that I will be voting on this. It's not because I don't, I think it will endanger our compliance status, it's because I think we had this, we've had multiple opportunities over the past several years to try to come up with, you know, compliant plans or compromises, and we have finally, after, you know, because you've been in the meetings as I have been, a long, long slog, we have, we have reached this point. we have reached this point of submitting a compliant plan. And I don't think putting language like that in the letter is fair to the citizens, either who voted for or voted against the plan at town meeting, or who supported the plan or didn't support the plan at town meeting. I just don't think it's fair to them, because I think it creates a possibility that doesn't exist. That's all, that's all I'll say in the matter, that's how I feel about it. It's not because it's your idea.
I just want to say, we have no idea what the risks are with this, we don't. And this limits our available actions after the fact. We have no idea what this is going to do to us, 10%, 20%, this plan, this MBTA act, we have no idea. We're all speculating, but we have no idea. And I'm just saying here, that by doing this, we're limiting things we can do for the town down the road. That's all. I hear you.
I think, I think that's where we're going to, I think that's where we're going to disagree, John. Because just as you said, if it means nothing, we should add it. I'll say, if it means nothing, why add it? Right? And we'll be, and we'll be stuck in that back and forth.
Yeah.
I'll just repeat what I said, we have no idea what this is going to do to the town, and here we're voting on something that will reduce our, by every lawyer I talk to...
But I'll ask, I'll...
No, every lawyer you talk to here says what you want to hear, so...
If we want to march every lawyer in Milton through the doors and get their opinions, we'll be here a week.
Hey.
A lot of people are here.
Maybe we should, no, I'm just kidding.
All right, I feel like the discussion has kind of reached a zenith, and is there anything else that anybody wants to add? So motion's been made and seconded, this doesn't need to be a roll call vote, so I'll just say, all in favor?
I'll say aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
And so that's 1 for, 3 against. So then, I think what we need, for you, Mr. Milano, then, is a motion to approve the submission of the Communities Act District Compliance Application.
Yes, thank you.
Would anybody like to make that recommendation, or make that motion?
I will do it. Move to approve submission of the MBTA Communities Act District Compliance Application.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Daley, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Hegarty, all in favor? Oh, sorry, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, 3 to 1. That's the end of that. And I just want to say, I'd like to commend everybody, I feel like that was a very reasonable discussion.
Yeah, no, I agree.
And I hope that we can walk away with good feelings and continue to engage in conversation. Thank you.
It might take me a little longer to get to sleep.
Well...
We hope you get to sleep. I said, we hope you get to sleep.
We'll make the...
We're laughing, so, that's a good sign.
Yeah. And none of it's personal.
Exactly.
If I can say, anything I have learned in the past several months is, it's not personal.
Yeah.
Even when sometimes it seems like it.
Not for us.
Well, I mean, yeah.
Not for us.
I've seen some personal things, but even that I don't think is personal.
But that's a hard lesson to learn, because everything else is personal.
That's true.
It falls outside of that, anyway.
John, thank you for, you've been advocating for your constituents and the constituency of this town, who share your views incredibly well. And, you know, it's been, it's been great to be a colleague with you during this. I really appreciate it, because, you know, I bear the brunt of a lot of things out there, and, you know, I just think it's very nice that, you know, we're all able to get along on friendly terms, even when we disagree. And I wish that more of the town would adopt the same disposition.
Maybe we can spread.
Yeah.
Well, we can model the good behavior, that's for sure. So, thank you to all the members on that. So let's move ahead, before we start holding hands. We've got, not that there's anything wrong with that.
Ups and downs.
We've got the, now, item number six, Milton Budget Coordination Committee Appointments, Mr. Milano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we have, the board adopted this committee charge at its prior meeting on June 30th. Two members of the select board are designated as serving on it, the board hasn't nominated and appointed those two members quite yet, so we're just looking for action on that. And then we also had talked about appointing a resident to this committee, and I realize we have an oversight, we typically, our practice is to list the names that, of non-board members who might be appointed to a committee on the agenda before we make that appointment. It's a requirement under open meeting law, so we should not take the action on appointing any residents tonight. The board can take the action, appoint members, so I apologize for that oversight, but we can correct that for the 22nd.
Okay, my also apologies to Mr. Walker, because I told him it was going to happen tonight, so...
Yes, no, we should have his name listed.
Okay, and the committee's not meeting before then?
No, I wouldn't.
Okay, so, so he won't miss any, any of the fun stuff. So I believe, if the members will indulge me, I think that we had spoken about appointing both Mr. Daley and Ms. Hegarty to this committee as the, as the finance committee. And I just wanted to ask a quick procedural question, that wouldn't violate any, they wouldn't have to post as the finance committee if they were meeting together on this, would they?
They, we may have to cross-post it, but it doesn't mean anything really different.
Okay, I just would look into that, make sure that if we have to do that, we should do that. So I will make a motion to appoint select board members, Mr. Daley and Ms. Hegarty, to the Milton Budget Coordination Committee. Would you like to second?
I'll second.
No, Mr. Cohen, second. Any discussion? Are you guys accept the appointments?
I accept.
I accept.
Okay, great. So all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so that's unanimous. And with apologies to Mr. Walker, we will get the job done on the 22nd. Mr. Milano, discussion approval, contract with Capital Strategic Solutions for Financial and Operational Overview.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, we talked very briefly about this at our prior meeting, I had neglected to include the proposal in the packet, so I apologize for that, I did do that this time around. As I mentioned in our prior meeting, it's kind of a broad overview of both town and school, financial operations and controls, identify places where improvements could be implemented, and report back with a report, with deliverables, with recommended actions. And I would be seeking an approval to move forward with that and get the work underway.
Great. Any questions from the members?
Just a quick comment, so I thought the, I thought the proposal looked good. I do, it's, like, maybe this is like a little bit nitpicky, but it would have been nice to see a little bit more of, like, what they wanted to do with the breakdown between Milton Public Schools versus, like, the rest of the town. Like, I didn't really see, like, a percentage breakout of that. I don't think that's, like, a reason to not vote in favor of it. But it would be nice to just understand that. And maybe, and maybe that's tricky to do, my question was, is, maybe that is tricky to do because some of these systems, like, flow into each other, I would assume, but I just, I didn't know what your thoughts were on that, Nick.
No, I think that's, that's right, I mean, if you think about our accounts payable system, payroll, there's interaction, you know, there's folks in the school department who have their job to enter their piece, but it all comes back to the town side, we're using the same software and the same tools, everybody's working off the same information, payroll is submitted to town payroll from the schools to there, we're all working, again, with the same kind of tools. So I think it's, a lot of that overlap is why I don't think that appears as crystal.
Yeah. And to be clear to, like, anybody watching, like, that, the flow of those systems is why it's definitely necessary for the town to be in the scope of this.
Correct.
You know, I wouldn't want folks who are demanding an overview of the school systems to say, why are they lumping it all together? It seems like it's because the town systems and school systems are intertwined.
Correct, and deficiencies there in terms of process would affect both.
Right.
Improvements would affect both. So that's, you know, that's the basic behind it, but also ensuring that there are direct conversations with school representatives about their processes that are internal to how they're managing their budget, and then processes on our side of the house as well, in terms of how we're managing our budget to come together with, you know, best practices that work for everybody.
Yep. That's good.
Other comments or questions? I'll take a motion on this one, if someone wants to do it.
I'd like to move to approve the contract with Capital Strategic Solutions for Financial and Operational Review.
Seconded by Mr. Cohen. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. We have our, next item is a discussion update approval, liquor license zones per request of the Joint Committee on Consumer Protection and Professional Licensor for the home rule petition for five additional liquor licenses, House Bill 4089. I hope the discussion is not as long as the title of the agenda item. Mr. Milano, you've provided us with these excellent maps and some comments by email, but I'd...
Sure.
Welcome your overview here.
Sure, so, just as a reminder, we, the town meeting in February did approve a home rule petition that would allow Milton to have five additional alcohol licenses for consumption on the premises, which is the legal language for restaurants. The home rule petition does not limit geographically where these would be allowed in Milton, it was broad to be allowed anywhere in the town, and there would be licenses to be held by the select board for issuance anywhere in Milton. As the legislation has been reviewed at the committee level at the legislature, they've, they've not been inclined to support such a broad approval. What they typically do is, they either require that it be assigned to a very specific address, all of our prior liquor licenses that have been approved by town meeting and by the legislature are tied to a very specific address, which means that it's not transferable by the owner, but it also means the select board can't issue a license for the location of Novara to somewhere across town, it has to stay at the location of Novara. So what we were seeking was more flexibility to have licenses that could be issued with, because we don't know of today of anybody who's going to be requesting a license, and the idea is to have them so that they don't have to, you know, sign a lease and then come to town meeting, then go to the legislature, and take a long time to get through that process to potentially request a select board for a license. So, in order to respond to the committee's request, which was to identify zones in Milton where the town expects a license could be requested at some point in the future, it's kind of a tricky project to identify zones that, you know, some future thing might happen at, that we don't know today. And they explicitly said it can't be a map of the entire town, so that is not a loophole we can use. So what I have done is, based on a couple of conversations we've had with the board, identified a few areas around town for feedback, and I'll just start kind of, you know, Curry College, Fuller Village area, I did an area that includes the Ice House 40B project, which does have commercial...
Quick question, did they ask for a limit to the area?
They, no, I think they just said, a map that shows us what they describe as economic opportunity zones, I don't know that there is a, you know, a number of zones that they want to limit it to, but I think this is all part of the dialogue. So one that covers the Ice House and kind of that, that strip of Blue Hills Parkway to Canton Ave, the paper mill site, which is, just in keeping with the MBTA Communities' approved zoning, that does contemplate a large potential mixed-use project there, so who knows what might happen. Again, in thinking about the MBTA Communities' approved zoning, the Mattapan Station area, Central Ave and Milton Village area, you know, a strip along Granite Ave, starting with two Granite Ave down to the East Milton Square, and then, in the East Milton Square vicinity incorporates the limits of the East Milton Square mixed-use overlay that was approved by town meeting in June. Then sliding down to an area around Reed'sdale and Pleasant Streets, there's a couple of commercial buildings there already. And then lastly, an area along Route 28, you know, primarily thinking about Newcomb Farms. But again, this is, right now, as written, the home rule petition allows, in theory, these to be anywhere in Milton. What the committee has asked us is to say, okay, you can't do that, can you narrow it some way? This is no way implying that we're going to start issuing liquor licenses for all of these locations. The underlying zoning wouldn't allow that in the first place, this is more just saying we would have approval from the legislature to issue a license in these areas to an entity that meets zoning, meets the requirements otherwise of the process. So it's an exercise they want us to go through, and that is a draft now, we can make it a prettier map with the assistance of the GIS team, but I just wanted to solicit feedback before we move to that stage.
Other comments or questions?
Is there a minimum, a minimum area size?
No rail guard rules were given to us, just not the whole thing. Just not the whole town was the bottom line.
So, I mean, there are a couple of spots that have commercial on it, like, I don't know if they're developable for mixed use, but the, the corner of Blue Hill Ave and Brook Road, right? Like, if that area were ever developed, where the Milton Food Mart is, and I think there's like an abandoned building, I've heard people mention that as a potential development opportunity. And then, I mean, the other site could be the, the 7-Eleven at the intersection of Randolph and...
I have tried to capture that with the Reed'sdale Pleasant area.
Yeah. Those were the, those are the two questions I had.
The first one I did not have, but it could be extended from the, the sort of called Mattapan Station area one, could it be extended a little bit further?
Other questions or comments from the members? Mr. Cohen? No? So just, oh, sorry, go ahead, Mr. Daley.
Now, what happens with these licenses, they're kind of stuck to these areas? If we have an entity not, in an area not represented, what happens then?
Yeah, if a project came forward and they're outside, and these are the zones that are approved, for up to five additional licenses, we would have to go back to the old way, which is, okay, we have a project, we have a location, let's go to town meeting, get approval, let's send it to the legislature for a special act. So that is...
So to, so to miss a site is tricky?
Could, yes.
Yeah. It really sets up a development opportunity, or is, like, kind of, I don't want to say privileges some sites over others, I don't want to say that, but without being too dramatic, could it disadvantage some parts of town?
It certainly could, right.
Yeah.
And that's why, you know, being creative and trying to be generous with locations, again, because we're, we're not really, all we're doing is narrowing where they could go anyway.
Yeah.
So I think being broad is, is okay.
Right.
Because the risk of not being, doing that is then where we're going through a longer, lengthier process with somebody else.
And just to be clear for, for everyone, there's, whoever is, you know, applying for this still has to go through the normal permitting process of making sure that they're zoned in the right building and getting everything that they need, is, you know, victualers license and everything else.
Correct, yep. All the regular approvals and land use requirements applies, all this just says is, if you meet all those requirements, the select board may issue a license to you.
Right, so this does not mean that we're turning the Milton Village into, you know, a bars district of 50 bars. There's only five of these things for the whole town.
Correct.
And, and we would still have the right of refusal on, if we didn't, if we didn't want to allow, I mean, I guess it would still go, it wouldn't be the select board, that would be the ZBA or Planning Board?
Right, the primary determinant would be, do you even have the zoning? Is the restaurant use allowed in any of these districts, which a lot of them, not necessarily, it's an allowed use in the business.
We basically have five additional licenses that have to happen in one of these areas, basically.
Right, yeah.
Okay, well, any other questions or comments from the members?
So we'll formalize that and bring it back on the 22nd, and then obviously, if there are any additional thoughts in the meantime, reach out to us, and we can incorporate that.
Did the planning board get a look at this?
I have not shared it yet, because I was starting here, I'm happy to distribute it.
I think it would make sense to get the planning board input if they, if they have any thoughts.
Okay. So I'll add...
I would say, unless, and I'd let the group correct me here, our instinct is to be more inclusive with this than less inclusive, because we don't want to limit this, and we know that we'll still have the ability to ensure whomever is utilizing one of these permits is following all of the other procedures.
And the other thing, too, is it's five, you know, many areas we have, it's five licenses, so...
Yeah. So I think that, that'd be great, and if they could look at it before our 22nd meeting, and if they have any thoughts, and you could incorporate those, and use the GIS team to make a pretty map. Is this your handwriting, though? It's pretty, it's good handwriting.
Yes, thank you.
Everything I get from you, I guess, is typed. Okay, any other, any other thoughts on this? We have item nine, discussion... We have item nine, discussion update, October 27th, fall special, 2025, fall special town meeting, potential warrant articles and timeline.
Not a ton from me. I just wanted to note, I'll distribute the alcohol and town land bylaw, which I have not, and the lighting one, I did reach out as we had discussed. I reached out to Ms. Bradley today, so we'll have those teed up for discussion on July 22nd. Those are the two specific articles we talked about at our prior meeting on June 30th.
And then I think we just identified in our climate action, some other potential articles. I'm sorry, Mr. Daly, did you have a?
Do we need to take a motion on the previous?
Oh, no, we're gonna, we're gonna do it on the 22nd, once we've made the changes.
All right.
And, and planning boards inputted. Any other warrant articles that are on people's minds that they would like to see included in the warrant?
So there's talk from the, from the school building committee about bringing forward an article that would extend the, the land swap time.
Because of the MSBA?
Yeah.
Okay. Are they aware of the, what's our deadline to get items to the warrant committee?
Sounds like it's early August.
August.
Yeah. So folks are working on a draft article.
Okay.
Just so nobody's caught off guard by that.
That's why we have this here. Other, other warrant articles that people are aware of?
I'll just note that a couple that we had previously discussed and held off on were accepting a statute that would allow for the establishment of an elderly and disabled taxation aid fund with the voluntary payments on the tax bills. We pulled it off, the June warrant.
Oh, yeah.
We had also talked about, you know, revocation and denial of licenses and permits for non-payment of taxes. It wasn't a, you know, massively pressing issue, but it would be something I think we'd be seeking to, to adopt, accept as well. Those, both of those articles are basically drafted and prepared, so I can include those on the agenda on the 22nd and distribute them ahead of time.
Let's do that, because I know for the second, the latter one in particular, I know the town treasurer was interested in that one.
Correct, yeah. On both of them. She brought both of those to my attention.
Okay.
So that's kind of the working list. And then Master Plan Implementation Committee, their term expires at the fall town meeting, so I believe they're working towards a potential recommendation for the master plan and potential small updates to the master plan.
Okay. So and those would be, it would be an article that we would put forward on their behalf?
MPIC would submit to the one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else on this one? Let's move ahead. The update approval discussion, Town Council and Labor Council. Mr. Milano?
I think, nothing substantively different from my last update, that we finished interviews on, on both Town Council and Labor Council. We're working towards a recommendation on Labor Council, working through reference checks before making a final recommendation. Likewise, for Town Council, conducting reference checks for the firms that have submitted prior to a recommendation as to interviews for the select board. I'll just note that throughout this discussion tonight, we've talked about a number of potentially lengthier discussion items for July 22nd, including if Mastot attends, about Randolph Ave, Select Board Landing Committee, or an update on the WRF. We've been talking to the police chief about having one of his, a departmental update, like Marina did, have Chief King come in. So I think we need to prioritize if we're also going to do two or three hours of interviews. That would be a marathon meeting, or we could consider an alternative date for the interviews if, if the board thinks those other items are more pressing. But I know we've continued to, we've pushed off the Town Council stuff already. I just, I think some of these might dictate triaging accordingly, and I know John is traveling on the 22nd, and to be there for the interviews in person does add a different kind of feel to it. So I just want to be cognizant of that as well, so.
Thoughts from the members? Ms. Haggerty?
I mean, it does, it is a lot to do interviews. I think we were doing two or three. We're narrowing down to two or three finalists.
Right.
And what's the duration of each?
For us, it was 45 to an hour per, per firm.
Yeah. So that's already like a nearly three-hour meeting, potentially.
Yep.
Yeah, so.
Do we need a call for the interviews?
That's again, also up to the board. The board could appoint a selection committee or a recommendation committee and say, you know, three or two members go interview and come back to us with a recommendation. That is also an option.
I mean, I would be okay to give up a couple of hours on a Saturday to do interviews, but I know that's a big ask in the summertime, and I also don't know if we've got folks that are, if, I guess this is, the question for the board is, we can either, we probably either need, if we want everybody to participate in this, I don't think it happens until August. If we'd rather move forward ahead with it quickly, it might make sense to appoint two people to sit in and make recommendations on an interview committee, and I'm, I'm, I'm fine with either approach. I think, my perspective is, I think it's probably better to get this issue settled sooner rather than later, but, you know, we can, we can discuss that as a board.
I'd be in agreement with that, to separate this from our standard meeting, to have this on a different day, if there are two or three of us that can make it and do the interviews, report back to the group on recommendations, definitely sooner than later. I think it's time for us to really get staffed up.
I think if we could get three people, we can post it as a meeting. It would have to be an executive session, because, no, we just have to ask the other firm to not listen in. But if there was a Saturday, do we want to look at our calendars real fast?
Saturday's probably tough to get.
Or, or sorry, go ahead, Mr. Milano.
If weekdays are available, it could certainly be a week, a morning, a weekday morning, or a dedicated weeknight where we just, the board just does that, is an option as well.
So, and Mr. Cohane, are you out the whole week of the 20th?
I am, yeah.
Okay. So maybe if we look, is, or is there anybody out the week of the 28th? I'm going to be gone on the first.
The week of the 28th would work for me.
I'm away that week, but.
But you're, are you here on the 28th?
I am.
And you're here on the 28th of the week?
A morning that week?
A morning that week?
Yeah.
How about the, how's the Wednesday morning of the 30th look for folks?
Good time?
Should we do eight to 10 or something like that? Is that too early?
That's fine.
Okay, let's, let's say that for the July 30th, eight to 10.
And I can always set it up that if somebody is traveling, they could zoom in and participate via Zoom, and it wouldn't be necessarily in this room, so it might be more, watching this meeting from Zoom is not as, you don't get the same
It's not ideal.
So if it were in a smaller group with more confined space.
Room or something, yeah, maybe.
July, morning of July 30th, eight to 10.
So this is town attorney interviews?
Yeah. And then obviously we'll let Mr. Wells know about that too, if he can join us.
I'll be in Detroit, so it'll be like, what, an hour early for me?
Are you working there?
Yeah.
No, Detroit's on the same time zone.
Oh, it is? On ZAS?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
I thought it was
If the sun sets an hour later.
Okay.
It should be.
Yeah, it's like on the bubble?
Right on the line, must be.
We're, we're really the one that's on the, we're on the line just as much. Yeah, we're really far, he's there very far west, yeah.
There's an ASTO management, administration, management conference, really fun stuff.
Tips, talk to me.
Yeah, will do.
Love the Motor City. All right, so I think we have
Eight to 10.
Eight to 10?
On the 30th.
I would hold eight to 11.
Okay.
Thinking about just the mechanics of it.
Okay, all right.
And I think what could come out of that is a recommendation, and then the recommended firm come in to the, to our next meeting as a introduction and a discussion with the board.
Yeah, right down. Sounds like a good point.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome. Town administrators evaluation, administrators evaluation. I will administer the administrators evaluation. So what we're going to do is, we had requests out for FY '24 and FY '25 evaluations. I think I am the only person here who is really here for the FY '24 evaluation. I know, Mr. Cohane, you are working on the FY '25 evaluation from your exchanges with, with Carla. So I, if you're okay with that, Mr. Milano, I'd like to just read what, how do you say Carla's last name? Is it Fede?
Fede.
Fede. I'd like to read what Ms. Fede wrote for your evaluation. Is that how, we haven't done this since I've been here, so I'm not sure. I can also just provide a highlight of it.
However you want to proceed, I think just to note that it's not her evaluation.
Correct.
It's composed
It's, her evaluation is composed of feedback that she received from members, so this is not, although I will add, on a, on a side note, that Ms. Fede has told me that you are a fantastic boss and a great asset to the town, and, and she really enjoys working for you, so.
So you're getting some 360 feet back too now.
You get some free sugar with, with this evaluation.
Yeah.
And, and that's not inconsistent with what I've heard from, from other folks. So I will just, I'll, I'll read through this quickly with no objections, and then I, do we need a motion on this? We don't, right? Oh, no, yeah, we do need a motion, depending on the discussion.
Correct.
So the evaluation period of July 20, July 1, 2023 to June 30, 2024, during the evaluation period above, Nicholas Milano, Town Administrator for the Town of Milton, was assessed on key performance categories, including individual characteristics, professional skills and status, relationship with elected members of the select board, policy execution, reporting, citizen relation, sorry, that's policy execution, comma, reporting, comma, citizen relationships, staffing, supervision, fiscal management, community, and prior year goals. This evaluation was intended to be completed by five elected select board members for a comprehensive assessment of the town administrator. However, only one evaluation was submitted by the deadline. As a result, the summary is based on one sole evaluation, and Ms. Fede recommends that additional feedback continue to be collected for this. Spoiler alert, it's me. Based on the evaluation, Mr. Milano consistently met expectations in most areas with particularly excellent attributes in policy execution and fiscal management as it relates to monitoring and managing the fiscal activities of the organization. The overall rating was satisfactory, and no goals or accomplishments were established for the subsequent fiscal year at FY '25. The feedback reflects overall satisfaction and that Mr. Milano continues to be an asset to the town.
Thank you.
So, good job. Oh, there's some thunder.
Look at that thunder.
What was that?
I would like to recommend, so, so again, congratulations on, on a job well done for FY '24. We're still a year behind on your evaluation, so I'm hopeful that maybe we'll do that in August, since it seems like the July 22nd one is, is jammed up. What I'd like to suggest to our, our group here is that we lay out some, some goals or objectives that we might have for Mr. Milano for FY '26, so that in addition to the sort of standard job description, and it would probably be good to, to discuss your thoughts about goals or objectives with Mr. Milano in advance, so that he's not surprised that we've tasked him with, for example, running a marathon on behalf of the Town of Milton or something like that. So, which he pretty much does every day anyways, but I, I think it would be helpful for him, and I think also helpful for the town, for him to hear, for them, for everyone to hear what our, our goals and hopes are for Mr. Milano for this coming fiscal year, knowing that we can't retroactively create goals for previous fiscal years. Is that all right for everyone?
Yeah. And, and I just want to say that in, in my putting together the '25 review, you know, I have a whole bunch of questions. I went through the, the town meeting description, and that's where the goals and objectives came from. We all need to do that, and it's actually pretty good, because even if we're new members, that's something we could do, you know?
Yes, yeah.
But that's clearly written out in it. And the other thing I'm working on with, and I meant to talk to Nick about it this morning, is the job description. We have a job description for the town administrator that's dates back to 2014, before all these were written, and we need, we really need to bring it up to date, and we're working on that. And those are, I, I want to use kind of the urgency of this situation to get the evaluation done, to get that completed also.
Thanks.
And I can add it to the list of goals and objectives.
That's an easy one. We can take care of that. No, I appreciate it, and I think there's also the element of the select board's own goals for what this board wants to try to accomplish, and obviously it ties into what you set for me, but they can be kind of slightly different approaches, or they might have different kind of topics. So I, thinking about that as well through this process in terms of what, you know, nine months from now, what does this board want to look back and say, you know, we, we hit these marks, we should have spent more time on these things. I think that will be valuable. A retreat is always helpful to, to have that kind of dialogue, if we find a date in, in September to, to work on that. And then lastly, you know, I know we're still somewhat new to working together, and even Ben and John, it's only been a year or two, but if there are things that need to improve, things that need to change, things that aren't working for you, this is, you know, anytime is okay. I really value that, because it only is helpful to ensuring that you're getting what you need from me. So don't be shy, I guess, is the bottom line, and past board members have, have not been shy, and that's always been helpful, and I do appreciate that. So I just wanted to make sure that's, that's clear, that my expectations are to take back feedback, so that we're all working well together, and we're, you know, moving together at the same kind of speed.
Mr. Cohen?
It's good for everybody.
It's definitely for everybody. Okay, I think that satisfies that agenda item. We don't need, we don't need a motion on that, do we? To, to accept the
The board should vote to accept the evaluation.
Okay.
Yeah.
So as it was my evaluation, I'll make a motion to accept the evaluation.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Keep up the good work, Nick.
Thank you.
And speaking of good work, we are going to slide right into the town administrators' report.
Thank you. I know I've mentioned these at our last couple of meetings, but I just wanted to reiterate that Alex Ortiz has started as the Towns and Milton Randolph Director of Veteran Services. He was in Milton today. The office is still undergoing some renovation, so he hasn't quite moved into his revised and improved digs here in the Council on Aging, but he's at work. He's been reaching out to folks, getting caught up to speed. He's already certified with the state to be a VSO in Massachusetts, going through requirements with the VA to be able to support and administer VA claims on behalf of both Milton and Randolph residents. He'll be in Milton Tuesdays and Thursdays, and has his email set up, which is a ortiz@townofmilton. His phone is, is set up, so you can track him down if you need him. He's already connected with Lisa Hearn, the Director of Cemetery, connected with the American Legion. Just now I saw an email come through. So we're starting those connections, and we'll continue to build that out as he takes over the role. So we're excited to have him and welcome him. And I did mention a brief introduction, potentially on July 22nd, so that the board can put a face to a name as well. Michael White will start on Monday as the new building commissioner. That position has been vacant since December, so we're excited to have that office back up to the staffing that it needs to be at. I just want to take a moment to note that we have two part-time local inspectors who are also certified as commissioners, Walter White and Jay Blow, who have been putting in many, many hours in the vacancy to keep things moving, to keep permits going out the door, to keep inspections going. So that entire office, we're grateful for their work, but specifically Walter and Jay for all that they've done. You know, and we had a previously, a previous vacancy when Joe Prondec left, and they both stepped up then as well. So just want to acknowledge the work that they do, and that we would be in a much tougher shape without their work. Director of Planning and Community Development, still vacant, still accepting applications. Town Engineer, likewise, and the Assistant Director of Planning, Cheyenne Frasier, who I've mentioned, will be leaving Milton on July 25th, so we'll be posting for that job. The plan is hopefully to get the director position filled first and go from there. Lastly, I, I think it, as the chair noted at the outset of the meeting, that this was a busy weekend in Milton between the crash on Randolph Ave and the incident at the WRF. From all accounts, that was a really tough scene on Randolph Ave, so just want to note and appreciate and appreciate, you know, the Milton Police, Milton Fire, Coastal Ambulance, who all responded to what was a very tough scene. So we acknowledge those efforts and their service. And then Milton Police detectives and officers have had a busy stretch here with a lot going on. We hope to get back to the more quieter times in Milton, but do appreciate their work on behalf of the town. Those calls are always tough, and it demands a lot, and it demands a lot of work hours. And I should also note, Milton Auxiliary folks were out at both scenes with lighting and cones and other support, so appreciate everybody's work over the weekend. And that's it for me, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Milano on his report?
Is there anything we can do to spur some interest in this Director of Planning role?
We are -- we have posted it everywhere. We've advertised it everywhere numerously, numerous times, I should say. I think uncertainty around MBTA communities was a factor, and kind of that being answered, hopefully, will trigger some renewed interest. I'll note, we've had first round interviews with two candidates. We're going through additional interviews with those candidates, so we have candidates that we've been looking at and interviewing, which is good. But it has been vacant since Tim's last day was in November of '24, so it's been a lengthy vacancy. And I think it's more about kind of, I attribute to a lot to uncertainty as to what's going to go on. I think now that there's been some resolution and finality, that might spur additional interest if, but like I said, we have candidates that we're in the process of interviewing currently. I'll just add to that point. A Town Engineer has been vacant since Marina moved into the DPW Director role, which she took over in December, so that's another lengthy vacancy. We've had a couple of conversations with firms that do municipal recruitments to think about whether that, it's not so much a headhunter, and I don't want to attribute that, but, you know, bring in somebody that has a network of people that can support our efforts to attract and recruit and steal somebody from another community. So that is --
Entice them to come.
Entice them to come, right. So.
Speaking of enticement, I mean, how does, so, you know, I have experience in this, maybe enticing, you know, folks from municipalities to the state. How does our salary measure up? Because there's an incredibly tight labor market for PEs. I'm assuming that this person has to be a PE.
PE preferred. We would really --
Yeah, okay.
We would truly prefer it, but we're open to --
Marina's a PE.
Correct.
Right? Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I just, I don't know if the, it's been a very competitive labor market, so I don't know.
It's a, yeah, and for Milton, this position, as well as the Planning Director, and a lot of those management department head positions are covered by a collective bargaining agreement.
Okay.
So it does limit our flexibility to a degree.
Yeah.
We had approached that unit to reclass the Town Engineer position to change the salary range for it, and they were remenable to that. So that, where it's posted at now is an increased range that reflected some salary survey that we did to compare us elsewhere. But that is, there's a limit to that as well. But we're, again, trying to be a little bit more proactive and team up with somebody potentially to facilitate a recruitment effort.
Yeah. That sounds like a good idea. Is it like a, is it like a, like one of those, like municipal groups that like does like the Town Administrator type searches?
Right. There's only, I mean, three or four of them that do this work, so.
Okay. So it's like one of those?
Yeah.
Okay.
Will you update us on any discussions with that?
Okay.
It's promising. We've got a couple of candidates, though, at least for, okay, great. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Milano?
You know, I just would like to add, you know, Mr. Milano rightly pointed out the hard work that the public safety teams put into that crash. And, you know, those, those types of scenes can be really traumatizing for the frontline employees and any bystanders or residents who may have witnessed it. You know, it shouldn't go unnoticed, and I don't think it goes unnoticed, that three lives were lost on that roadway. And, you know, I think it's, I just think it's important to recognize that as we, as we go forward and try to figure out what the next right steps are for that, that this is about preventing something like that from happening again.
If I could, if I could, I was going to wait until public comment response, but if I could add to what's been said already. I think about this as being a particularly heavy year in the time here in Milton. We've lost, we've lost a student, a young person. We've had two horrible instances of domestic violence. We've had this accident on Randolph Ave. We've had the shooting now at the Wharf. And I think there is a, you know, we battled over MBTA communities, so I think there's a certain heaviness that currently sits with us in the community. And I want everyone to know, I think we're all trying to say this, that the Select Board does not, we're aware of it. Obviously, we're working, and we care a lot about safety, not only down at the Wharf, not only for our families here, but also on our roadways and for our students. And so don't think that we don't see these things and that we don't care. We are certainly working to make sure that everyone feels that they have a high quality of life here and a certain level of safety that's afforded to them. Just let everyone know, I reached out just to the Chief Engineer at Mastod, hoping to start another conversation about where we are, whether it's going to be a date on the rotary or an update as to where we stand. And so some of our community concerns can be heard, so that we can start to not have the roadway feel as dangerous as it feels right now, especially in this time. So I wanted to share that, because I feel that heaviness as a citizen here as well. And so.
Well said. Mr. Cohen.
And, yes, thank you. And I wanted to say, too, that one of the residents at 88 Wharf had reached out to Ben. Ben and I spoke. I've responded to him. I have a phone call scheduled with him tomorrow to talk about what steps we can take for the, that incident that happened down there. So we are, like you said, we're listening concerned and taking action.
Well, maybe I'll move to the Chair's report, because I was going to say some similar stuff. But I don't know that I need to repeat what everyone said. I think it was very well said by all three members here. You know, I might add that, you know, the way that the Select Board works, you know, we follow our open meeting law and our posting guidelines, so, and we meet on Tuesdays, so if something bad happens on a Friday, and we've got our next meeting the following Tuesday, it becomes difficult to address it in a very formal way as an agenda item. We can, and we've kind of moved public comment response to Town Administrator's report, but we can certainly respond to public comment. But that, those laws are there for a good reason, and they also don't prevent us from starting to work on issues immediately as we become aware of them. So I know, you know, with, with the accident on Randolph, which was terrible, conversations from Mr. Milano and the Chief, and Mr. Madden, the Chief of the Fire, started already, basically like day of, and continued throughout the weekend. We've been receiving comments from our, from neighbors about both the accident as well as the incident at the Wharf. I went down to the Wharf today to meet with a few folks. So we are here to listen to you. Just because it's not on the agenda doesn't mean that we're not thinking about it and working on it. We, all four of us, and Mr. Wells, too, obviously, think and work about Milton all the time. And we're here for, you know, as volunteers, and if you have thoughts or anything that's concerning you, to Mr. Daley's point, we are all feeling pretty heavy. There's a lot of stuff happening nationally, as well as the stuff that's happening locally. But the way that we get through things is as a community, working together. And so I hope that we can continue to do that, and I hope that this board continues to model that, even when we disagree. I don't know if anybody has any, that's basically my Chair's report. I don't have much else to add. Any, anything else from the public comment response that people wanted to chime in? And then, Mr. Milano, on, oh, sorry. I'm going to put my hand up. On my sheet here, I have the future meeting date of July 22.
Yes.
I believe that there was a consensus that, so we now have July 30 as a posted meeting for the attorney interviews.
Correct.
And my understanding is that the, for first meeting of August, it looks like there's just going to --
Multiple conflicts.
Multiple conflicts. So we're going to not have a meeting on the 12th of August. So our next, then regularly scheduled, meeting would be on August 26.
Correct.
Fifth.
Six.
Six, yeah.
I'll just note that'll be a pretty lengthy gap between the 22nd and 26th, and it may be helpful to try to find some time in that range to move some more articles over to the Warren Committee if we can at our, the 22nd meeting. So, but I can, I can regroup with the members and try to find an alternative time that might work.
Yeah. And I was also thinking that, you know, if there is anything that, not that we're ever a rubber stamp, but something that just needs our action, we could also handle that on the 30th.
Yep.
But maybe for Warren articles, it would be better to have a standalone.
Sure. Okay.
And then future agenda items?
I have a few of those, but they don't need to be perhaps as best for August, but there was a couple of things that I wanted us to start thinking about.
Please.
One, how do we start moving forward on the fire station, the RFP? What are our next steps there? John, for East Milton, I'm not sure. I'm thinking that we need to do some form of outreach for folks in East Milton, so what they want that building to become, so that can inform some of our RFP process, but so that we formalize that in a meeting. Two, Granite Links, they sent an email about their lease, but we should possibly engage with thinking about the lease and also some potential for changes in land. If there's some land that can be freed there for us in town to perhaps use as parkland. I think there's some review in their lease that can be done. And then, three, moving on, what are our next steps on Town Farm? I think that's a discussion with the group that we have left in terms of scope. Do we want to do the feasibility study? Do we have folks that are already here that can handle some version of this feasibility study about the roads? And do we actually want to move forward? And can we move forward with the RFP? Is it possible to have fewer units? Does it not work for them financially? What are their costs now, since the RFP has set out? And sort of formalizing our next steps on that. It's a lot, and I don't think we can get to that on the 22nd.
Right.
Yes, and I think we had talked about having Governor Stotan on the 22nd already. Was that factored into your agenda?
Yes, because I had some deliverables to get back, too. So I had tentatively marked it down, but obviously, with the Town Council thing, I wasn't sure how much we'd get to, but if that comes off, that gives us a little bit more bandwidth to.
Well, I think we should keep it on, just to do some, at least some housekeeping on it, and if we don't have any hard conclusions, but it's not a bad idea to include it.
Sure.
Other future agenda items. Mr. Cohen.
We had discussed the meeting minutes and that. Is that something we want to put on this next agenda?
Yeah, so I think we would do an exec session for our 22nd to meeting minute and approval for at least the last two executive sessions.
Sure. And approving release of them.
And approving release, yeah. So we have, we would meet, could we, it's going to be 22nd, just, you know, we come, drink some coffee. Would we be able to go into open session after executive session to then announce that they've been released, or do we have to?
I don't know that that action is required. I think once they're voted to be released, they're now, they're public at that point.
Okay, great. Great. Okay, that was my, that was my big question on that.
And did we want to have some discussion at that about just meeting minutes in general, or is that something?
Oh, the, yeah.
You know, just preparation of meeting minutes and when they get released, and you know what I mean, how weird.
I think we can do that. I think, so Mr. Cohen and Mr. Milano and I have been on an email thread about the sort of meeting minutes and the timing for them and everything. It's nothing is, nothing about Ms., about Lynn, who does fabulous job with everything and was on a very, very well-deserved vacation in the Cape this past week. I think just sort of clarifying, like, what's the timeline for minutes is probably a good idea.
And process.
And the process.
Improving our processes a little bit where we can.
Yeah. So I think if we can, why don't, let's, Mr. Cohen and I can have our usual planning meeting with you on the agenda, and then, although we'll have to do that before I leave for my vacation.
Okay.
But we can have a planning meeting with Nick, and we can just look at the agenda and see if we can fit it in there. Otherwise, that could be something that we do administratively on the 30th.
Okay.
30th is getting longer than two hours.
I know. And then I do have one future agenda item myself. I'm sorry, Ms. Hagerty, do you have any future agenda items? I, along with many other folks, have been very concerned about the activities of ICE, and particularly in their recent budget increase, and the activities that we've seen in the Commonwealth, knowing that we have a target on our backs. There is an organization called LUCE, L-U-C-E, that has been coordinating a lot of the ICE responses, and I would like to invite them to come to a future meeting. Originally, I was thinking maybe the 22nd, but I don't think that's going to work now. But I would, I've heard concerns from many folks about what we can do as a town to prevent what is essentially kidnapping of taking place.
It's probably also a good idea to have Chief King.
I agree.
Sort of.
That's why I was thinking it might make sense for next.
Yeah. Run us through the, what are the protocols when ICE shows up?
Yes, and I've spoken with him about it. I think that would be helpful, too. So maybe what we could think about is if Chief King's come into the Landing Committee meeting next week, well, no, I'd still like him to come on the 22nd to talk about the incident at the Wharf. We might just have to ask him to come back again for that meeting.
Okay.
I'm familiar with LUCE. My family, we have a text chain, and we're always discussing it.
Oh, good. Great, good. All right. So that's my suggestion. Anything else for that?
So something, something that's, you know, I'm concerned about, I don't think it, I think it probably goes to the Budget Coordination Committee, but with, you know, in the federal landscape, cuts going to the DOE, you know, how does that? I don't know if anybody's been tracking that yet. And I'm sure the School Committee is looking at it, and MPS is looking at it, but at some point, we may just want to understand if there are any known impacts or potential risks.
I think that's a great suggestion. Maybe we could have Ms. Dexter join us for that second half of August meeting, if she has an opportunity to kind of understand what the impacts are of this recently signed bill and the cuts that have been made.
It's certainly a Katie Blake and John Phelan.
Katie Blake.
More direct conversation. And I can, but we can kind of think about a way to share that information, and I'm sure that work and to report to the School Committee, and so we can work in terms of coordination on that.
And there may not be much that's understood right now, because I think Desi might be processing it themselves.
Yeah. Okay.
Do we have a, if I remember from last year, do we have a July 15 deadline for budget submission to the state? Or what is that? What was that?
Yes, for, just for like the transfers between departments, and the Finance Committee is going to take those up on Friday.
That's moving money from one spot to another, so.
And then the fiscal year.
We have until Friday to do the moving?
We have until the 15th to make any final changes to the fiscal '25 budget, and then it's set in stone after that.
And we're good on that front? We don't need to?
Yes, and actually, our forecasting was conservative, so everything looks slightly more optimistic than when I last reported.
That's always nice.
Yes.
I'm assuming, Mr. Milano, that we're going to have our.
I don't, we don't need to. The next round of meetings is until after our next meeting. I don't have a, I don't have much of an update at all tonight for executive session, so we can forego it.
Okay. So let's forego the executive session. I will take a motion to adjourn.
Second, oh, sorry. I'll second.
Made and seconded by Mr. Daley, seconded by Ms. Hagerty. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah.
I'm still shocked. No, I'm still shocked. I'm still shocked. No, I'm still shocked. I'm still shocked.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for joining us online.
Thank you, everybody.
And we will see you again on the 22nd.